Check. Want anything for us?
This meeting come to order. Clerk of real confidence.
Joy Sellar?
Here.
Dee Perkypile?
Here.
David Mitchell?
Here.
Ricky Snyder?
Here.
James DeVito?
Here.
Terry McLuhan?
Here.
All right. Please stand for the pledge of flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Brings us to approval of the agenda, motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second. I need to add a resolution to new business number seven for discussion on replacing a transit tram engine going from propane to gas.
Is that a resolution or a...
Resolution. You should have a copy of it in your... Mr. Weaver thinks we need ordinance and then we'll change it over. Did I give you a copy of it?
No.
Oh, I did. No, I'm sorry. My bad. Okay. Well, here, you can have mine then. Anything... Yes, sir, Mr. Mr., sorry.
Yes, sir. I see an ordinance that the city clerk passed out here, an ordinance for the purchase and installation of water meters. Are we gonna just put that under the workshop?
We can wait and add that to the discussion of the workshop on water sewer rates since it was all kind of a conglomeration. Or you can add it now as a new business and keep it on the agenda as a separate item.
Just wanted to be sure we acknowledged it. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to, under unfinished business, let's just remove number three there, collapsing parking lot, until I can get a chance to...
Number three.
Get some folks together and talk about it.
Just postpone it or take it out?
Just take it out for right now.
Okay. So strike it?
Strike it.
I got a question on that.
Yes, sir.
If we're gonna do that, I mean, are we looking at six months, a year, or two months?
No. In last council, we had the folks from Osage.
Yes.
They wanted to get involved into two and go down below and look at the storm sewer area as well as, along with myself and with the police chief, or the police, I mean, the fire department. So we wanted, we want to be able to take a look at that.
I understand that it's not, we're not looking at, like, too much down the road.
Probably.
Okay, anybody else? All right, all in favor of them in the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moves us on to approval of the amendments from May the 12th, 2014. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any changes, deletions, corrections? If not, all in favor of the mo, or the amendments as they are, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Brings us into commission committee reports. Planning. I don't think we have anybody here from planning, C P C, no. Hospital, nobody here from the commission or the hospital, either one. From Parks, I thought Mr. Featherstone was gonna be here. If not, Mr. Jackson is here to fill in if y'all have any questions to Parks at this moment, otherwise he'll speak.
Here.
There he is. Come on in. Bill, you're gonna talk on the Parks Commission part.
Is this about appointing Saudi to Parks Commission? Is that what we're talking about?
Late as usual.
No, this is in reference to another man.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. As I think most of you know, we had a town meeting of sorts about the master plan for trails a week ago, last Thursday, two weeks ago from tomorrow, and it was very well attended. We had about 100 people sign in and several others that didn't sign in. We were very pleased about that. Pretty diverse group of people. Great opportunity to exchange information with one another and we all learned something. That's the good news. The bad news is that I believe only one member of this table was present, one of seven, that being Mr. Mitchell. Thank you for being there, Mr. Mitchell. And we lost an opportunity to share that information with you guys. So, on behalf of the Trails Committee, I would like to suggest to you guys that we set up a workshop at your convenience as soon as you guys can work it out, where as many members of the Trails Committee as possible can be there, and where hopefully all of you guys can be there. And we can also have a couple of Trails quote-unquote "experts" from northwest Arkansas attend with enough notice. So we can get you guys up to speed and answer any questions you have or address any concerns that you might have. But I would like to formally request that you guys set up a workshop. If not now, very soon.
Mr. Mitchell?
We'll probably ask our expert of setting one up.
When she returns, yes.
Yes, yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I was about to make that comment.
We will set one up.
Yes.
Okay. That's all I've got.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Daniel, anything to add on behalf of Parks?
Nothing, I can't do it.
Okay, thank you. All right. S T C, nothing, Cemetery, nothing, moves as public comments. There's bound to be a sign-up sheet somewhere. Would you get it, sir? Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Dan. All right. Daniel, top of the list. Please introduce yourself, and you got three minutes.
Hello, my name's Daniel Jackson and I'm, most of you see me grow up here. I was born in Eureka Springs, lifelong resident, also vice chairman of Parks and Rec for six, seven years now. Just a quick, quick thing, try not to eat up time. First off, I'd like to say, if you hadn't had a chance to read the article in The Citizen about the Trails meeting, I would beg that you do before you make any decisions on the vacating of the upcoming street that Parks has proposed Trail Service for. I'll leave that right there at your table. Also, I'd like to bring up a couple key points to why Trails, Trail System in Eureka Springs needs to go on. It's not only just for the tourists, which is our main lifeblood, a capital here, which the aspect of having Trails that wrap around to the most beautiful part of our city, which is not our structures, which is actually our woods and diverse nature that we have that surrounds us. Forgive me if I come across a little nervous. That is a very popular, especially in today's tourist trade. To the, what really concerns me the most is the locals. Now, we have a big parking problem. We all know that, we always have had that. Trails would, has in the past already offered somewhat of traveling for those individuals that live close enough not have to park and avoid getting tickets. Lately, especially with the new ticket agent, a lot of locals are getting tickets, ones that have been allowed to slack, which they shouldn't have been allowed to slack in the first place, that's the duty, et cetera, et cetera. But if we did have a Trail System that really did connect to most, every part of Eureka Springs, it really could allow more versity of non-driving locals to get down to where the vital place where they make their money and pay their bills. If you're down here and you have to park and you forget to do your meter and it costs you five bucks, well, I'm sorry, that's half hours of your pay. Some people, that hurts. I'd also like to, real quick, remind everybody of an ordinance that reads something similar to this here. The ordinance reads exempted acts. It shall not be violated of this chapter where any person uses a public property or municipally in any manner or for the purpose or purposes which such property has been made available for public use. That means that at every right, that property that which is being asked to vacate is made public, has been made public, and never was not made public, and has always been in use. Also, I'd like to remind this table that this vacating before previous owners has come up to our table before. This is not a unknown situation. Previous homeowners tried to have that vacated. So with that, I will sit down. I really strongly support Trails for dual purposes, and I speak as a local which does a lot of walking. I walked here. I've walked on that trail. I've walked behind most of your all's houses growing up through various Trails which have been in access and just forgotten of usage through the past three generations. I mean, some of these were showed to me from generations back. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Okay. Next up will be Wade Williams, if he is here. He signed up, so I'm assuming Wade Williams. There you are. Is that it? Somebody committed forgery, one of the other?
Oh, no. Surprised you could read it. All right, I'm Wade Williams, here to talk about Rock Street a little bit, and I'm here on behalf of the folks at Marble Flats. I was originally contacted by the people at Marble Flats back in 2010, early March 2010, in regard to a petition to vacate Rock Street that had been filed at that point in time. The eventual climax of that portion of this was a meeting that was held on the property in, on March 31st, 2010, with the then-property owner, except that he failed to show up. His attorney was there, my clients were there, he didn't show. And then no further action was taken, except that he sold the property. In June of 2013, the matter appeared again, only this time it had a different face. And that's the issue that we've been here on now a number of times. Since that time, since June of 2013, I've made repeated statements that I and my clients were willing to listen to any proposals, to any offers that were made, to any suggestions for a resolution. And since that time, I've heard nothing. No one has approached me, no one has come to me. Mr. Mitchell, you can laugh, but that's the truth. No one's come to me with any proposals to fix this problem. During the past year, I've lost count of the number of Parks meetings, council meetings, planning meetings that I've attended in regard to this, and I know everybody's probably tired of it. During that time, I've repeatedly cautioned that the city's own process, as set out in the statute and the various ordinances, is not being followed. I've repeatedly stated that if you look at the application on its face, it's defective and is flawed, fails to meet the requirements of the ordinances and statute. Your very own city attorney has said, "Don't do this." Your Parks Department has begged, "Don't do this." The Municipal League Attorney has said, "You're taking a great risk if you do this." And not once up to this point has the applicant bothered to address how vacation of this road is in the best interest of the city. No one seems to care that 15 city-owned lots will effectively become landlocked if you take this action. Haven't heard that mentioned by anyone. At the last meeting, I offended Mr. Mitchell by offering a proposal. I came here in good faith, made a proposal, but was told that I had, I guess, overstepped my bounds in doing so. I did that because I'd been repeatedly criticized for not offering proposals and not working to try and resolve these issues. At this very council table, Ms. Sellar, my clients have been called bullies on at least two occasions.
You've got about 30 seconds.
Okay. I'm here tonight to ask one final time that the city reject the proposal to vacate. I don't care what reason you use. You can use the errors in the application, you can use the lack of an application at the time you began to take action, because if you remember, it'd been withdrawn. You can take the fact that all the adjacent property owners to the road being vacated did not agree and did not sign a petition. You can take your objections of the Parks Department, your Trails Committee, the numerous citizens that have shown up, or even my client, if you want to, as your reason. Or you can actually look at the statute and review it and find that the standard required is that you determine that vacation is in the best interest of the city and that this fails to comply. I'll stick around for the vote.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jay Bender. Please introduce yourself, sir. You got three minutes.
My name's Jay Bender. We've been here since 2009, so I'm not a lifelong resident, but I don't think that precludes us from having an opinion and a say in what goes on around here. We were at the Trails Workshop Meeting and were impressed by the number of people there and the obvious support for making a good Trail System in town. There already is a Trail System in town. In fact, the city's own website talks about it on the very front page of the website. Please use our in-town Trails. So I think it's a foregone conclusion that there ought to be Trails in town. I would be saddened to see areas that are already owned by the city and owned by the public that should be used for Trails, vacated and given away and made it impossible for them to be used as Trails. I've seen some comments by people who are afraid of privacy issues or crime issues, and all the research that I've seen shows that all of those things can be mitigated and that having a Trail System does nothing but improve property values. So I just hope everybody recognizes the value of Trails in town and that we shouldn't vacate properties to prevent Trails going through various areas. If there are privacy issues or concerns, any of those things can be dealt with. So I'm, I'm in support of Trails in town, and I wanted to say so publicly. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Lynn Eaton.
Hi, my name is Lynn Eaton, and I'm here in support of the connecting of the Trails that we have. I think it's extremely important not to just have Trails that just go a short little distance and you have to turn around and come back, or that you go and you end up and you don't know where you are. You need to have them connect. It's very, very important for people to use them. I, I had friends who were in a very private little location, this is another part of the country, but, and a Rails to Trails was gonna go through right next to them, and they were not, they were not too happy about it. They were worried about all the things that everybody else is worried about. And it went in, and they said afterwards, "We love it. We use it all the time." I, I, if I were buying a house and had a choice between a house that was cut off and a, you know, off private someplace, and a house that was close to a Trail, I would always choose to buy the house on the Trail. You know, not everybody wants to walk or ride a bike, but there's lots and lots of people who do, and I think that's the future of, of a lot of the tourism in Eureka Springs. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Got that, Lynn, public comments? Moves us on to unfinished business. Number one would be discussion ordinance 2208, be third reading, motion to discuss.
So moved. Second.
Floor's open. Mr. DeVito.
Don't seem to have a, what's the number?
2208.
2208?
Yes.
Move to suspend the rules in place, ordinance number 2208 on its third reading by title only.
Second.
Major, seconded. Stand by for real call.
Dee Perkypile?
Yes.
Joy Sellar?
Yes.
David Mitchell?
Yes.
Terry McLuhan?
Yeah.
James DeVito?
Yes.
Joy Snyder?
Yes.
Ordinance 2208 and ordinance providing for local film incentives.
Mr. DeVito.
Move to approve ordinance number 2208 on its third reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? She's gotta read it for a check. Sandy, did you have any comments on the third read before we do the third read? Okay, thank you. Short sweet.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Joy Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Sellar?
Yes.
Mr. McLuhan?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
Six zero?
Thank you.
I can all.
Okay. Moves us on to number two, discussion ordinance 2201 as amended. This will be the Clean City Ordinance.
Motion to discuss. Second.
Floor's open. Mr. Mitchell.
I believe we had passed this on the third reading and then our, where is it at here? It was noted that we had left one sentence out that needed to be corrected, and you'll find it in the ordinance back on the third, fourth page back, section 5.0407, with, strike the words, 1, 2, 3, 4, fifth sentence down, strike said house building and/or structures, comma, or, and then the word "therefore," strike it, and then add, "An inventory of the saleable materials shall be prepared by the contracted person or business and the business, and the building official, period, sale shall be to," and then strike, "by public sale to the highest bidder instead." And that was left out, that change was left out when we were reading all the different little amendments.
I was gonna say, my copy had it, it just got overlooked.
Yes, it got overlooked, and, and we needed to get that into the record.
Mr. Perkypile.
Mr. Mitchell, where exactly are you talking about?
A fourth page back, section 5.0407F, fifth sentence down. There's, you'll see on the copy, if you got one of the newer copies, you'll see a line through where it says "sell," then you'll see a line through said house building and/or structure, comma, or, then you'll go a couple words over and there'll be a strike through on "therefore," and then the addition that was highlighted in yellow, which is probably not on yours, said, "An inventory of the saleable materials shall be prepared by the contracted person or business and the building official, sale shall be to," and then there was a strike out, "by public sale." It reads, "Sale shall be to the highest bidder," was the change. Do we have all changes?
It should have. That should be the last one, unless there's one more coming up and ending the discussion.
Do you need to make a motion to make that change, or did I do that already?
I need a motion.
I need a motion.
Yes.
I need a motion to, to make the change to ordinance number 2201 as amended.
And a second.
Second.
Okay. Mr. McLuhan.
We've already passed on the third reading?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Can we, can we do that, Mr. Attorney? Or do we have to have a, a new ordinance to make that amend that?
Since the ordinance has not gone into effect yet, you could do a motion to reconsider, and if you had sufficient votes, then reconsider what was passed on the third reading. Otherwise, it does need to be a new ordinance to add to it if it was missed out of the original.
Mr. Snyder.
Okay, it was in our paperwork, it just wasn't read as part of the changes.
If it wasn't, if it wasn't broadcast, it wasn't put forth at the table, it wasn't voted on, then...
Okay. So what are you saying we need to do now?
It would have to be reconsideration of the third reading.
Okay.
Or it would have to be a new ordinance to amend that currently.
Mr. Mitchell.
I withdraw my motion, and I will make a new motion that we reconsider ordinance number 2201 on its third reading with all amended items as noted in your copies.
A second.
Second.
First discussion, forward vote. Mr. McLuhan.
Does all of that need to be reread then, Mr. Attorney? Or, just know, maybe so?
I think technically you need to take two votes. One to reconsider and then one to amend it if you do get approval to reconsider. So the first, the first appropriate motion here would be to reconsider the ordinance. The second one would then be to amend it, and the third one would be to approve it as amended on its third reading.
So we have a motion to reconsider right now, number one?
Yes. Motion and a second on the table. Okay, now the first discussion on the motion and the second.
Reconsidering is just in regards to, because we forgot to read it?
For whatever reason. And it has to be made by someone who is in the majority of the vote, which I believe Mr. Mitchell was. So, and that should be a roll call vote because it's an extraordinary measure.
Okay. So shall it be? Stand by.
Joy Snyder?
No, since I voted no on it, no.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McLuhan?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
Ms. Sellar?
Yes.
Five zero, uh, excuse me, five one.
And then there needs to be another motion. Mr. Mitchell.
To amend? Now, this one's the amendment, right?
This will be to amend.
Thank you. I make a motion to amend ordinance number 2201, section 5.0407F, as noted in your, do I have to read it?
You have to read that line.
Okay. Section 5.0407F, fourth sentence down, the strike through, taking out said house building and/or structure, comma, or, taking out the word thereof, adding the words, "An inventory of the saleable materials shall be prepared by the contracted person or business and the building official, period, sale shall be to," striking out "by public sale."
Second.
I need to add something.
Okay.
If you look one paragraph down, there's another strike through that hooks back to that.
Section 5.0407G, striking out fourth sentence down, "Such house, building and/or structure, or the," also comes out.
Second.
Thank you, and...
Okay. So we have another motion and a second.
Does it need to be real call?
Including the amendments. It's still part of the extraordinary motive.
It wouldn't hurt.
Yes. Stand by for real call.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Sellar?
Yes.
Joy Snyder?
No, I gotta follow with my first vote.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
Mr. McLuhan?
Yes.
Five one?
Now, Mr. Perkypile? There's a third, third one.
Now to approve it on its third reading as amended.
Go ahead.
I make a motion that we pass ordinance number, what, I already figured it out, 2201 on its third reading as amended.
Second.
This will be a real call vote.
Ms. Sellar?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
Joy Snyder?
No.
Mr. McLuhan?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Oh, yes.
Five one.
Okay. Takes care of that one. All right. Brings us to number four, discussion of ordinance 2209, be the second read, motion to discuss.
So moved. Second.
Second.
Floor is open. Mr. DeVito.
Move to suspend the rules in place ordinance number 2209 on its second reading by title only.
Second.
Stand by.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Eller?
Is this gonna be open for discussion?
This is second reading?
Yes, it is second reading.
Once there's a motion. Why are we doing the name? I thought that was third. Why are we doing a name thing? I thought that was on third. Am I dyslexing again?
Yes.
To suspend the rules.
Oh.
Yeah. Real suspension zone, call for it.
Ms. Eller?
Um, yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Six zero. Ordinance.
Stand by.
2209, a ordinance adding a section to chapter 7.166, noise of Eureka Springs Municipal Code to address vehicles, machinery and equipment and sound producing devices.
Mr. DeVito.
Move to approve ordinance number 2209 on its second reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
When do we get discussion?
Right now.
Yeah, right now.
Before we approve?
Yeah.
We haven't approved it yet, that's, the motion is to approve it.
Yeah, yeah.
It's been a long week.
Good. Go ahead.
The last time we talked about this on page one, the third whereas, and prevention of unreasonably loud sounds and noises that unreasonably disturb, injure or endanger, I have injure circled. Is that word supposed to be there? Sound injuring? I don't think I, I brought it up last time, I don't think I ever got an answer.
The third whereas.
First page, right there.
Oh, I see, okay, thanks.
Yeah. I never got an answer. Is that word supposed to be in there? Was that automatic to go along with the usual wording of stuff?
What word? Word injure?
Right here.
Yeah, the third, third paragraph where?
I'm striking it.
I'm asking, Mr. Attorney.
I didn't write it. I assume that the person that wrote it intended it for it to be there.
Why?
Mr. Perkypile.
And sound can injure individuals, and you can lose hearing if repeated.
You've got your ear on the speaker.
Too loud.
Really? Okay. And the second thing was on page two, number five, I believe we crossed off the word or.
It's gone.
And that's, okay, thank you. I just need a clarification of that one. Okay.
Mr. Perkypile.
Uh, yeah, some people have tinnitus severely enough that certain frequencies and certain decibel levels actually do hurt them.
Oh, okay.
And, um, I have a note here on the last page, number eight, that we needed to look at or consider music related festivals, temporary duration permitted by law for which permit has been granted by the city, provided that the noise is produced within the conditions and limits stated in the permit. I'm not sure, I don't remember if that was important or not, but I wanted to bring it up.
That's just saying the original thing we go along with.
Clerk is coming.
One of the things that wasn't discussed while that was going on is that when there is a permitted festival, the amplified sound for restaurants with outdoor seating is not for the whole month, it's only for three days anyway. And so, I, I felt that there was not a general understanding that if people were able to crank it up to 85 decibels, it would only be for that weekend, those three days. It could not be for the whole month of May because that's not how amplified sound works.
Well, do you think we ought to include that, make that distinction? I'm asking the table.
Make which distinction?
A distinction about music related festivals would just be specifically for the time duration of that festival.
But it says for which a permit's been granted, but I guess you have to assume that it's for the length of the permit, but it doesn't state that you're right. I'm asking.
Ms. Snyder.
Okay, this is amending our original sound ordinance that has, it's adding one little chapter to that whole thing, which is very explicit in regards to the whole music festival, decibel, permit, time period and all that. So, um, maybe just strike number eight. Do we need to refer to it?
Ms. Eller.
Oh, I have a question about number eight too, then, since it's not clear just what part of the original ordinance that this is amending, are we excluding then, in other words, activities of a temporary duration for which no permit has been granted are excluded from this provision in number eight? We have temporary activities for which you don't need a permit.
But we're not amending.
Does number eight exclude all those temporary activities from any limits to how much noise they can make?
But we're not amending.
We're adding.
Adding.
Okay, we're adding. Does, my question is then, okay, does this exclude activities of temporary duration which don't require a permit?
I'm sorry, I just got lost.
I mean, it's, it's just, we have, throughout the state of Arkansas and the city of Eureka Springs, we have so many ordinances that are written in such an obscure way that if anybody really wants to nitpick and go to court over it, the city doesn't have a leg to stand on. And this to me, you know, I expressed to the person who wrote the ordinance, I, an email detailing, they wanted to know what my objections were to it, and I detailed them and they said that they ran it all through their lawyer and their lawyer said everything was fine and I, you know, didn't know what I was talking about, so I kinda gave up the argument, but if you brought it up again, I still think that that paragraph eight is obscure. It's, it doesn't say what we mean.
Ms. Snyder.
Okay, section B, which is the beginning part of what you're talking about, states the following, "Uses and activities shall be exempt from the provisions of this chapter" that we're adding to the original. And it's just kinda naming the various things that are already in the sound ordinance that we have. Um, I'm not even sure why we have that in there, but that's me.
Okay.
Mr. Perkypile.
After reviewing the current ordinance, 7.16.07, special events, says a mayor or city clerk may issue special permits allowing the production of amplified sound in commercially zoned districts to be extended until 2:00 a.m. and at a level not to exceed 85 dB for festivals and special events. So, if that was good enough then, I think it's probably good enough now, that it indicates festivals and special events and.
And that does this.
They have a, they have a time duration.
Okay, well, then this specifically says that it, it only applies to commercially zoned areas, that if it's a residentially zoned area, this doesn't apply.
No, there's, the next part is regarding residentially, residential areas, where you can have a one day permit for special occasions such as weddings, parties and reception, receptions. So, I think we've got it covered.
Mr. McClung, you had your hand up next.
Uh, yes, and I just wanted to state that, that I, I still believe that there are not really any effective changes that, in this ordinance adding, adding it into what we already have, that are gonna change the way that it is policed and, you know, which it's, it's not needed because it's really not gonna change anything. So, I think what we have in place already is sufficient. Just wanted to restate that.
Mr. Weaver.
I think while we've got this thing open, that we should add that it be music related festivals and not just festivals across the board.
Point of order.
Sorry?
Point of order.
State's point of order.
Uh, we're discussing the addition of a chapter to an established and standing ordinance. If we want to change something else, that would be under that ordinance, not under this, this chapter.
Mr. Weaver? Do you understand?
I'm not sure what the point of order is.
Okay, okay. Our motion is we voting on this chapter, we're talking about adding to the existing sound ordinance. What James was talking about is changing some wording in the original ordinance.
This would change the wording in the original ordinance.
This is adding a whole chapter, not changing the existing wording, adding a whole chapter.
It would influence the interpretation of the already existing material.
You'd change the original ordinance, is what he's saying.
Well, yeah, it's adding a, a chapter that doesn't deal with, with music, it deals with everything else, because the original is pretty much strictly music.
No, it would be also used to govern music. It could be governing by virtue of paragraph eight, because you're making sound exempt. So, it does have an influence on the other parts of our noise.
Okay, so if it's going into an ordinance, if the whole thing is about music sound, and all we're doing is adding a chapter on other sound besides music.
It doesn't exclusively do that.
Do we need to add something there?
I mean, unless you put wording in this that it excludes music, then you have to define what is music.
But why would we exclude it? We're adding a chapter, not amending.
Anytime you add to the document itself, a court, if they're going to look at it, is going to look at the document as a whole and see how each part leans on the other part. And by the terms that are used in this ordinance that you're now considering, it would, in addition to controlling your neighbor's lawnmower noise, also potentially control sound generated as music on adjoining properties.
Even though we've got the exemption list, which is everything that's in the sound ordinance.
Not completely, I don't believe.
Mr. DeVito.
For example, there was a permit issued during May fine arts for amplified music, and that goes against the original intent of the ordinance that was drafted, Joyce, you were party to that, I don't know, how many years ago?
Too many years ago and it's been amended too often.
It, it, it was placed there in the initial ordinance to address music and that interpretation has broadened and, and the city administrative assistant issued the permit because she lacked guidelines, and she felt like we should add guidelines to this and, and limit those extending permits to music festivals by themselves and not May fine arts, because that's, there's no relationship to music with May fine arts, and if we have other festivals, then people will be getting permits to extend amplified music till 2:00 a.m., which, you know, is not fair to the people that live here in Eureka Springs to have to listen to 85 dBs till 2:00 a.m. I mean, it's enough that they get it during blues, jazz, bluegrass, it's creeping into May fine arts, and I don't know whatever other festivals it will creep into, so I feel it's a good idea that while we have this ordinance open, that we add that verbiage to strictly categorize it to music festivals only.
I thought that was in there.
But it is, Mr. Mitchell.
I, I understand where Mr. DeVito's coming from and we can make that before the third reading and work on it, but the, under the third whereas, last sentence, of reasonable persons or ordinary sensitivity, the word should've been of ordinary sensitivity, so that would need to make, or needs to go to of. And then, one point that was brought up to me of, of potential concern, and I wanna, wanna raise it again, is under, or raise it again, is under second page, 7.1614A, number five, "To operate any machinery or equipment outdoors so as to emit loud noises disturbing to the quiet comfort, repose of reasonable person earlier than one hour after sunrise or later than one hour before sunset." There was a question in the summertime, sometimes people come home and like to weed eat or something in the cool of the afternoon, and there was a question, is, is the one hour before sunset restrictive of those people? And I thought, well, I don't know, but I will bring it to the table because it, it was an interesting question to me, and I thought it deserved opportunity to get discussed.
I brought it up last time.
Ms. Eller.
Sunset can occur anywhere from 5:00 p.m. until 9:30, depending on what time of the year it is. Doesn't that seem to be a little vague? An hour before sunset, I mean.
Well, it covers all the seasons, but you have to know where it's falling.
Well, it doesn't say, it doesn't say the season, it says an hour before sunset.
That's why we did that.
Okay, and I have another question here, that point that Mr. Weaver brought up, if we, okay, if this affects, the whole purpose, as I gather, of amending this ordinance in the first place was to try to do something about motorcycle noise, which seems to be what everybody hates. Well, at least according to my email, that's what the general public thinks that this ordinance is about, doing something about motorcycle noise. And I have a, a very, very thoughtful email from Jed Bullock on the subject that I got today. Okay, if this affects the rest of the ordinance, if a judge were reading it, then can we safely say in this ordinance, something that would, a noise that's loud enough to offend a reasonable person? Do we have to define how loud that noise has to be? Because a reasonable person could think a noise of anything over 20 decibels to 185 with, you know, they're offended by it, it depends on how deaf they are. Do we have to put into this part of this ordinance a definition then, again, of what is an unreasonable noise? By decibels, or, or this, would this not affect the original ordinance?
The original ordinance that this is adding to already has decibel limits and, and numbers in there, as I recall, Steve, does it not? It has 85, I think it's the highest we can go. And the, let me stress again, since Ms. Eller brought it up, this committee did not meet to discuss motorcycle noise. This committee meant to discuss noise in general, to add some clarification to the existing policy. And a byproduct that came out of it by having Al sit there as a policeman on that, is we, we got a really good understanding of how the police enforce the concept of noise now, and we also came up, found out that a lot of the statutes and stuff that they were using at the time were the ones from the state, which moved any particular fines or tickets to the state.
It's not true.
Well, you talked to Al about that one, sir, because I guarantee.
I'm already, I'm the police chief.
I talked to Al and he's talked to the chief and he said that was.
They don't lose any revenue.
And I'll go with Al.
I, I see what you're saying then, Terry, what's the point? Yeah, I, I'm on your page with this.
I'm lost now.
Not that it makes any difference, nobody ever listens to me anyhow, so, okay, okay, if this has nothing to do with trying to cut down on the amount of noise of motorcycles, which that part of the ordinance isn't enforced anyhow, so.
Right there, motor vehicles, motorcycle.
Let's get back to the.
I know, okay, okay.
Okay, does anybody know where we left off at, Ms. Clerk? Can you, can you get us back to the, the purpose we're here at, as opposed to doing what we're doing?
The last motion was to approve on the second reading.
And we had a second?
We did.
Okay. Any further discussion on any part of this? Because we got way off track. Mr. Weaver.
Just to allay Ms. Snyder's concern, if you look in the definitions, it specifically talks about music, and it is adding to the music level.
Sound producing device thing, yeah. Yeah, I was looking at that wondering.
Talks about radio, television, musical instruments.
Yeah, sound amplifier, loudspeaker. That add.
It does affect all of it.
Okay, so what are you saying? That we need to start over again?
Well, I'm not, I'm not telling you to start over or not, but I do believe that Mr. DeVito's points, then it does affect music, it doesn't just affect machine noise as in.
So, what was your thing again that you wanted?
Well, I'll get it for the third reading, I just wanna go ahead and get this on the second reading, but I'll.
But what was it?
It was to eliminate any speculation about festivals and that it only relates to music festivals, that there's the ability to get a permit to extend your hours only for music festivals and not festivals in general.
Would this affect a new time person, somebody who's trying to start a brand new festival we've never had? Would that affect them in any way? I mean, can you call a first time thing a festival?
Well, that's what we're trying to bring into some reasonable manner, is not that somebody just calls it a festival and somebody can go down and get a permit for it. somebody just calls it a festival and somebody can go down and get a permit for it, that will specifically list it as just music-related festivals only.
Is there some kind of legal procedure for making a festival?
Well, that's, I mean, if somebody wants to start, like, say, a classical music festival, but it's not an existing one, how, would what you want to do affect it, if at all? They're gonna call it that, but it's gonna be a first time, so we don't know.
Yes.
They would have to be city-recognized festivals.
Okay, okay.
It's, they have to get a permit for it. Okay, does everybody understand the motion and the second?
To approve on the second reading.
To approve on the second reading. Mr. Perkupile.
Mr. Mayor, I have one final comment before we do that. You know, in seven point sixteen point oh seven, where it says special events, which I read previously, it says you can't exceed eighty-five dB for festivals and special events, we could easily add music festivals, just one word, to that particular portion of the ordinance.
No.
Mr. Weaver.
If you do that, I think you are possibly already got at least one festival that probably gets in trouble with that, and that's your carving festival.
Chainsaws.
I wanna feel those chainsaws when you get enough of them going.
God, I love Eureka.
If everybody understands the motion and the second.
That would be a special event.
Yeah, we shall take a vote, a vote, uh, not a real call, but we just do a verbal vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, five, one. Okay. Second read. Okay, nothing else on that one? Moves us along, finally, to ordinance number twenty-two ten, be the second read, motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Floor's open. Mr. Mitchell.
Just a question, who were we vacating Sweeney Alley for? I totally forgot.
Me too.
I don't even know where it is.
Clerk.
Ma'am. Part of the structure is on the alley, and it's at the, toward the end of Douglas on the left, one of the last houses, not the last house, but one back. Okay. For the people who live there. Okay, thank you, I just was lost. Thank you.
Welcome to the club.
Need a motion for the second read?
Oh.
Motion's finned rules, whatever, however you wanna make the motion, Mr. Perkupile.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and read ordinance number twenty-two ten on its second reading, by title only.
Second.
Second.
Stand by.
Mr. Perkupile.
Yes.
Ms. Eller.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. McClung.
Yes.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Mr. Snyder.
Yes.
Six zero. Ordinance twenty-two ten, and ordinance vacating an unopened portion of Sweeney Alley.
Mr. DeVito.
Look to approve ordinance number twenty-two one zero on its second reading. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Stand by.
Wait, wouldn't this be the third, never mind.
It's just second, it's okay.
Yeah, this was the second reading, yes. That's what I have down here.
Okay.
Do we wanna do the third reading tonight?
And that moves us to.
No? We don't know that there's a rush. Nice.
Ordinance number twenty-two ten, let me, did I get it right? Okay. Okay, new business, sorry, I got, backed up here. Be ordinance vacating Rock Street, motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss. Second.
Floor's open, Mr. Mitchell.
Yes, since we're up to the point of looking at vacating, and since we have two draft ordinances here, I'd like to extend the opportunity for Mrs. Bricks to come up to the microphone, or her attorney, whoever she chooses, and to update us on what we have in front of us, please.
Okay, Rachel.
We realize this has been at council's table for almost ten months, and we first want to thank you for your patience and your diligence with this, thank you very much. I would like to briefly explain why you have two versions of the vacate ordinance, one contains an easement for utilities to be for the city and it's assigned, one does not, but I just wanted to address a couple erroneous comments that Mr. Williams had made. First of all, my application to vacate was never withdrawn, it was correct, and on six seventeen of thirteen at the Parks Public Hearing, Mr. Featherstone said, quote, Bruce and I were aware all procedures were correctly followed, end quote. And since the city leaves this up to Parks, and I followed all Parks's procedures, I'm not sure what the question is about that. And also, as far as the Parks meeting went, and them unanimously approving, or excuse me, denying my request, actually, Dan Jackson, who was up here speaking about trails earlier and not to vacate Rock Street, had actually motioned to vacate Rock Street, and it was seconded at that meeting. But it was premature for the public hearing, a motion to deny my request did not receive a second, nor did a motion to table it at that same meeting as well, it was only after Bruce started talking about taking of property, that it was four zero. And then finally, my attorney can rebut any claims that Marble Flats might have about a taking of property from probably the same case law that Mr. Williams would be using, and on, back on eight twelve, when we were first here in front of you folks at council, Mr. Weaver had even indicated, and I quote him as well, quote, having reviewed what Bruce has just told you and looked at the court cases, you stand if you cut off this access to the city paying Marble Flats for that access, and that is an inverse condemnation would be, and that would be determined by a jury, how much you would have to pay if you cut off, and that's a legitimate access. Now, whether that's a legitimate access goes back to her documents and goes back to the history, I don't know at this point, end quote. The public interest was also addressed way back in August, and one council member said that they didn't understand how public interest came into private property at this table, which is an interesting question, because again, this is not city property, there's a city easement, there is a difference. And another council member said, and I quote also from that same meeting back in August, quote, it's in the best interest of, excuse me, it's in the public interest of Eureka Springs to make sure nobody ever tries, and there is never a road built on that hill, end quote. So, all of the things that were said were never talked about, were talked about, and I just wanted to make that clear. I first must say that we did apply for a vacation for the same reason most everyone does, and that's to remove encumbrances associated with our property, for various but important reasons, so we would prefer not to leave a utility easement. The city has not used, maintained, or planned for this strip of ground in over a hundred and twenty years, nor has it expressed an interest in having any type of easement. The general public has not used this unnamed platted street either. The property owners who do actually use it have officially supported vacating the street at the public hearing and afterwards in writing, and moreover, SWEPCO, Source Gas, and Eureka Springs Public Works have all supported this vacation in writing as well. Any such easement obviously limits our ability to develop our property and threatens to possibly destroy the natural beauty we have worked so hard for, for two years, to uncover, restore, and maintain, and even some of you folks have remarked on how beautiful our property is. And frankly, we were taken aback by the proposal at the last council meeting that would supposedly, quote, save the city some litigation in the event that this continues to move forward, end quote, if my husband and I withdraw our petition to vacate. That came across to us, not only as a threat to the city, but also a threat to us as well, because then we'd be potentially causing the city to be sued if we don't withdraw our request. As far as negotiating, we have always felt since the easement belongs to the city that we should be negotiating with you at this table, but in efforts to be neighborly and find a solution, I would like to remind council that we have approached Marble Flats three times, all without success. The first, I went to Mr. Bland's office in July of 2012, we spoke for about five minutes, and I was told they were not interested in vacating. Then last June, I went to Mr. Wolfenbarger's office, and although we did have a pleasant conversation, I never received any feedback. And finally, since my individual attempts were not successful, I had my attorney contact their attorney on March eleventh. Eight weeks, eight weeks and one day went by, and we did not hear anything until you folks did at this last council meeting. We have tried to reach across the table three times, and not once have we been approached by Marble Flats, nor have we ever gotten any response whatsoever from our three attempts. In fact, Mr. Bland told my husband, when he was at our property, that he wants a road, and we did hear rumors that they wanted a utility easement. But we have no clue what they've wanted, and we've tried, and even so, and yet another attempt at compromise, that is why you folks have two versions of an easement, because it's for the city to do with it what they will, and it's assigned to whoever they feel like assigning it to. Again, honestly, we don't want any encumbrances on our property, that's why we applied to vacate, and we would like to see our vacation granted outright. However, if the city feels it needs an easement, or the city feels it can avoid a lawsuit by keeping a utility easement, we are open to leaving one in exchange for vacating this street, we thank you very much for your consideration of our request.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Mitchell.